Recording in progress.
Good evening. Welcome to the Lewisville, Colorado City Council meeting Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Lay? Think he's here.
Mayor.
Councilmember Most?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson? Mayor Pro Tem Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hefner?
Here.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Next up is public comments on items not on the agenda. This is a chance for anyone to speak for any item that's not on the agenda or any item that is on the consent agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please tell us your name and if you're a Lewisville resident. I do have three sign up cards and we will do those first. First up is Eric Lund.
There we go. Eric Lund, 901 Main Street. And thank you, Mayor and council members. Nice to be here. Just wanted to give you a couple of updates from the Lewisville Chamber of Commerce. First of all, our membership has grown since January, which is exciting. We've grown by 5%. And we now have represent 356 businesses in the Lewisville area. So it's pretty impressive. I'd also like to thank the council and our staff, our city staff for the business forum that we recently had. That was very well done. I thought it was excellent. And it was great to have an opportunity for the business community to voice some of their ideas and concerns and ask questions. And so we thought it was really great. And thank you very much for offering that to the community. We've got some really exciting events coming up, as you all well know. In the month of May, we will have, we have the entire month, the Taste Trail going on, which means you can go to any of your local restaurants here in Lewisville and vote for your favorite different category. So we want to promote the idea that we hope the community will get out and make some votes and vote for your favorite restaurant, your favorite place or attraction. And then we'll announce the winners at the Summer Fest on June 3rd. Also, we have a meet our leaders luncheon, which we're doing monthly at noon at the chamber boardroom with Deborah, our council member. And she'll be there at noon. That's on Wednesday, May 24th, next week. So invite anybody that'd like to attend that. We have a business after hours the very next day at Main Street at the Crystal Springs Tasting Room. That's at 5:00 PM. And we also want to mention, we're looking for more volunteers for the Taste of Lewisville, especially for the 2nd and 3rd of June. So if anybody out there would like to volunteer, you can go to the LewisvilleChamber.com website, go to the Taste of Lewisville page, and you can volunteer for different time slots. And wherever you're available, we would love to have you. And you will get some nice gift items as a favor for our appreciation for you volunteering. Also, I want to mention June 2nd, of course, is the Taste of the Main Street Dinner on Main, which sold out already like in two days. So that's exciting. And we're also looking for more 5K fun run and dog trot registrants. So if you're interested in being in that 5K, we'd like to invite you to come on out and join us. And for the rest of the day, enjoy the Summer Fest, which is part of the Taste. We're going to have vendors, art, entertainment. And we're accepting signups for our spaghetti eating contest, so, which will be at 1 o'clock PM. So if you like to eat a lot of spaghetti, we have up to eight contestants, under 12 and 12 and up. So it'll be a lot of fun. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure Councilor Hefner will be signing up for the spaghetti. All right. Next up on the list is our Fire Chief, John Wilson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and City Staff. I'm here tonight for my quarterly check in to answer any questions you might have about the fire district. I also gave you a grill safety tips also. And next time, I'll have it in dog notes. So the other mayors can look at it, too.
Thank you for that.
Any questions for me? Okay, real quick, 10,600 homes catch on fire because of grills each year. That's average. July is the most peak for grill, grilling, I guess. 19,700 patients become patients in the ER due to thermal burns. So other than that, be safe, grill, grill your, whatever food you have and do it safely. And I'll be back in a couple months. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the tips. Next up, and I think I have this correct, Catherine Smith. Do I have that correct?
It's pretty close. It's Cathern.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and staff, I'm here tonight just to thank all of you for your service to our city. I recognize that we have all been through in the last several years, COVID. We've been through the fire more locally. We faced a lot of stresses. And I say that, I want to say that I appreciate each of you and what you do and the questions that you ask, your commitment to a thoughtful process, sometimes a difficult process. And I also want to thank members, Hamilton and Hoffner, for stepping up at a time when our community has a lot of tough questions before it. And I know that many aspects of your work are very challenging and that our community is filled with people with lots of opinions, very eager to share them with you. And that you listen to us is a good thing. And I also am very proud of the city of Lewisville because when I look at what's happening on the national scene and I look at what's happening in Lewisville, I feel like we have a healthy process here. I hope we keep it. Rob Sacaro, who is on my right, I don't think I've ever been to a meeting where Rob isn't there, which just tells you something about how hard Rob works for our city and how committed he is to our processes, to serving all of us in the community very well. And so, Rob, I wanted to do a shout out to you in particular. I also wanted to give a shout out to our, the female members of our City Council, because I think that women face real challenges in leadership roles. It's a new thing in our country. It is really wonderful that 50% of our City Council is made up of women. That is an unusual thing, and it is to our credit. And I wanted to say that I recently went to the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable, which is a mouthful, where I saw a process that is not like what goes on in Lewisville. People are not necessarily respectful to each other. And Maxine Most is our representative there. And I was struck by how thoughtful she was in her questions, how she stood up for the right of the citizens of Lewisville to give their comments to the roundtable when the roundtable was thinking about just moving on. And I recognize that Maxine is not a pushover, but I like that. And so I just wanted to say to all of you, thank you, and let's keep doing the good work we need to do for the city.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comments on items not on the agenda or items that are on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. It looks like we have two members of the public on Zoom. And I don't see any hands raised. So we'll move on. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there any changes or motions to the consent agenda? Councilor Most?
I would request that we take item E off and item I off.
So you're making a motion?
I am making a motion to take items E and I off of the consent agenda.
As well as approve the agenda?
As well as approve the agenda.
All right, any?
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Any other thoughts on that?
I'll second.
All right, so any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we will move item 4E. We will call that 7.2. And item 4I will make 7.1. So we will do it after the swearing in of our pet mayors, which I'm looking forward to. So next is council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Do any members of council have pertinent items? Yes, Councilor Most?
I want to thank Eric Lund, I don't know if he's still here, for making his comments about all these really cool things that are going on in the chamber. And I'm just hoping that we are also using our channels with, from the city to help promote these events. I assume we are. And also, the Fire Chief, now that I'm scared about grilling, if we can also make sure that this goes out to, you know, through the city to our public, because I think, now I'm scared. Okay, thank you. That's all.
So Fire Chief, it looks like you did your job. Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. We're going to move on to item six, City Managers' report.
No report. I would just, I was expecting you to grill the Fire Chief, but apparently not. So that's all I have tonight.
City Clerk, could you mark the time on the recording? We're going to move on to item seven, regular business, which is the first of the swearing in of pet, 2023 pet mayors, Arlo and Hops. Would the members of the Youth Advisory Board like to say anything before the pet mayors are sworn in? Please. Just introduce yourselves, so we don't remember everybody's name very well. But thank you. This is pretty exciting for everybody. We really appreciate all your time and effort. And this has been, I think, very successful.
I think we'd agree. So we're just going to say a few words before we get on with the swearing in. And then I think, yeah, I think that'll be about it.
All right. I'm Lily. I'm Vice Chairman of the Lewisville Youth Advisory Board.
The Lewisville Youth Advisory Board?
And I'm Sam. I'm the Chairman of the Youth Advisory Board. And I think I speak for the rest of us when I say that we are very delighted to be here during the inauguration of Lewisville's first ever pet mayors. The goal of this project was to create a stronger sense of community and bring all of the animal lovers and citizens together. And I think we were very successful.
We had over 13,000 visitors to the election website, as well as almost 4,000 engaged visitors in total, making this project one of the highest engaging projects on Engage Lewisville. This project was a huge success for the Lewisville Youth Advisory Board, and we hope to continue to make Lewisville, especially for the youth, an even better place.
And we'd like to give a very special thanks to Ginger Cross. I don't know if she is here right now. We'd like to give a special thanks to Mandy Pereira and Jessica Schwartz for helping us organize this event. And we'd also like to thank you all as the City Council, all the pets who participated. And we'd like to give a very special congratulations to our new co-pet mayors, Arlo and Hops. And with that, I think we're going to start swearing them in.
All right. So Municipal Judge David Throer is here with us. We're honored to have you here.
So honored to be here, Mayor. Thank you. Are you all comfortable standing up? And when I'm done, we have one more thing that the council, the advisory council is going to do. So don't move. And what I'm going to do is swear them both in at the same time for everybody here that already signed their oath. Myself, and I will, I'll raise my right hand on their behalf. I, Arlo and, we, Arlo and Hops, do solemnly swear that we will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Colorado, the ordinances in the Home Rule Charter of the City of Lewisville, Colorado, and faithfully perform the duties of the office of pet mayor upon which we are about to stand. Congratulations. I believe that this time, they'll be presented with the badge of their office.
Sam, did you tell?
Probably.
Acting professional. You're so cute. We've had the pet mayor. I want to cut the shot off. I already cut.
I've had that.
Arlo. I haven't cut the box yet. I haven't gotten to cut this box yet. Sam, you're really bad.
I'll take, I'll take mine for that one. I'm okay with that. But I think, I don't know. It just was.
Look at how, like, he's so regal.
All right. All right. Do you have anything to say on behalf of your pets? On behalf of your pets, your co-pet mayors?
We thank you for the opportunity. Thank you. My husband has said that he couldn't be here, but we're new residents at Lewisville. We just bought our own home. I just wanted to say thank you. My husband and I are new Lewisville residents. We just bought our first house. And we feel incredibly blessed to live in such a beautiful neighborhood. And what an amazing welcome into this community. People asked how our move to Colorado was going. We said, great, our dog is running for mayor. And so it's been a really lovely start to the year. So thank you.
Yeah, well, you know, you've, you've found the right place when your pet overshadows you.
Happens all the time.
I just want to say a couple of things real quick. I just want to say thank you all as part of the Youth Council. Well, well done. Job well done. And it was a great project. I'm glad to see. I know other places in the United States have done this. And but I think this is a great idea. This is perfect for a city like Lewisville. So thank you all.
And don't forget, Arlo and Hops are going to be part of the parade on Memorial, Labor Day. Get my days right.
And then any other events that they feel they should attend?
And the council would also like to extend our thanks to the Youth Advisory Board. This was a terrific project. You know, I had neighbors talking about it. So they might have been some of the 13,000. I think that was the number of visits to the site. And I'm really glad it was a tie. So anyway, nice work. That was, that was really great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're bussy.
Great. They just moved you.
Thanks. Can we just bring our pets from now on to the meeting?
No. No.
I just think we should bring all, all of our pets. We just make it really interesting.
No. All right, we're going to get back to regular business. So next up will be Consent Item I, Approval of Proclamation Declaring June 2nd to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And Mayor Pro Tem Fahey will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a very important thing that we're doing to acknowledge all of the pain that's been experienced by the victims and the families of gun violence in the United States, and particularly in Lewisville in the last few years. So, proclamation declaring June 2nd to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation on behalf of the Lewisville City Council declares June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Lewisville, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 sustained non-fatal firearm injuries over the last five years. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas June 2nd, 2023, would have been the 26th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later. And whereas to help honor Hadia and the 120 Americans whose lives are cut short, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 2nd, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd through the 4th, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives and lost human potential of Americans stolen by gun violence. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership and to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Colorado, does hereby declare June 2nd to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Fahey. I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation. Is there any second?
Second.
Plenty of seconds. Does anybody have any other additional comments? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Then we will move on to item 7.2, which is Consent E, Approval of Economic Vitality Committee Purpose Statement. Councilor Most, you pulled this off the agenda. Would you like to?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to bring this up because this was actually a process that I pushed for at the end of last year. And we had gone through a number of steps in the Lewisville, in the Economic Vitality Committee, which I'm a member of, to come up with a revised purpose because it felt like, it wasn't really clear what we were trying to achieve, what metrics we were looking at to determine whether or not we'd been successful. And when I, unfortunately, I was not able to attend the last EBC meeting because I was with my daughter back east visiting colleges. And when I looked at this, when I was evaluating the packet over the weekend, it struck me that this purpose statement, and again, I'm disappointed that I wasn't able to be there at the last meeting because I probably would have raised these issues there, to me, sounds more like the job description of our new Economic Vitality Manager than it does what perhaps the Economic Vitality Committee ought to be doing. And so for me, there's, it's just not clear. It's still not clear. And I'm not going to object to this. If the rest of you want to vote this through, that's fine. I'll probably abstain. But I feel like we really need to think about all of the committees and commissions and boards and all of the bodies that we have established outside of this council to advise the council, to provide input to the council. And what I'm going to request is that we look at the Lewisville Economic Vitality Committee as part of our boards and commissions' overall evaluation. Because I guess what I'd like to do from my perspective is to, you know, I understand there's a lot of history and there's a lot of reasons we have different groups, including this one. I think it would be worthwhile, you know, as an exercise, and I know that this is on our agenda next month, is to think about what it is we actually need and how we should actually be spending staff time. You know, I know that our new Economic Vitality Manager is working diligently and has jumped in with, you know, all four limbs to this job. And it's going to take her some time to really kind of wrangle what's been going on. But again, I just feel like this, what I'm reading here, looks too much like what I would think as her job description. And so I, I, I want to make sure that she's using her time most effectively. And so yes, I'd like to ask that we take a look at this. I mean, I think that from my perspective, sitting on the EBC I mean, I think that from my perspective, sitting on the EBC for a year and a half, I really think that what I've heard over and over and over again from the business community is they want more direct communication with the entire city council. And I'm not necessarily clear that this is, this committee is, is, what's the right word? Is actually serving that purpose? And whether or not we should be doing more things directly with the business community as an entire council? And I have some ideas about that, which again, I would like to raise if we're going to look at this when we look at boards and commissions. But I just feel like we're kind of missing the mark on this. And again, I'm not going to object to this. If the rest of you want to vote it through, I'll abstain because I don't feel like it quite works for for me in terms of what I was imagining when I kind of pushed the committee to do this. But I think it's really, I think Economic Vitality, we all agree, is critically important to our community. And I, what I'm hoping is, and I'm sure we're going to get a lot of great ideas from our Economic Vitality Manager as she really begins to get her arms around what the city needs. But I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing is actually really serving the business community and is really opening up channels for communication and is not creating more layers through which people have to sift to reach the whole city council. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Other comments? Would you entertain a motion?
I would move that we approve the approval of the Economic Vitality Committee Purpose Statement.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any more discussion?
I will add that I agree that it would probably be a good idea to include the Economic Vitality Committee in our discussion of boards and commissions and council committees.
Noted. City Manager, you make note of that. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstain?
I'm abstaining, thanks.
All right. Was that clear, City Clerk? All right. Thank you, everybody. We will move on to Item B, Ordinance Number 1853, Series 2023, An Ordinance Approving the 11th Amendment to the Centennial Valley General Development Plans: Amended and Restated Development Agreement to Revise Permitted Uses for Portion of a Parcel H at 972 West Dillon Road. This is the second reading, and so are there any disclosures for this particular ordinance? All right, seeing none. I will open a public hearing and ask for staff presentation, and it looks like you are all ready to go.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, let me just go ahead and switch screen here for you guys. All right, good evening, council members and mayor. My name's Ellie Hassan, I'm Planner 2 with the City of Louisville's Community Development Department. And the item before you this evening is an ordinance for a GDP or General Development Plan Amendment for 972 West Dillon Road. And this item was publicly noticed per the municipal code requirements. So for a little bit of context, this property is located on the south side of Dillon Road near the intersection of McCaslin Boulevard. The site's about an acre and a half in size and has an existing one-story commercial building on it. The site is zoned for the Planned Community Commercial Zone District, and it was plotted as part of the Centennial Valley Parcel H first filing and has been replotted twice since. The property, as mentioned previously, is part of the Centennial Valley General Development Plan, or GDP. And as part of this GDP, there was an amended, there was a restated development agreement adopted, which was an agreement between the City of Louisville and the developer. And this implemented some policies such as, in this case, it's implemented things such as public improvement plans and has been amended from time to time and established in this case, uses such, things such as use regulations for certain parcels beyond what the Centennial Valley General Development Plan normally regulates. And currently, at the property at 972 West Dillon Road, the uses allowed on that property are regulated by the Fifth Amended and Restated Development Agreement. And as another note, the property does, the property originally had a planned due development and special review use for a Kinko's as a retail use, and several special review uses have been approved over time on this site. And for the proposal, the applicants are proposing an 11th amendment to the amended and restated development agreement. And what this agreement, what this amendment would do is allow for a new permit and special review uses on the developable portion of 972 West Dillon Road, which is on Lot 1B of the property. And it leaves in place the existing regulations for the remainder of Parcel H in that agreement. And this table on this slide shows a comparison of the uses in the Fifth Amendment compared to the proposed 11th amendment on the right. And the Fifth Amendment currently doesn't have any uses explicitly permitted. However, as you can see on the 11th amended permitted uses by right, there are several uses that will be permitted, which are based on the uses in the Planned Community Zone And then moving on, there are some other uses that are permitted either by special, that are permitted by special review use, which is regulated through Title, through Chapter 17.40 of the Municipal Code. And one of the changes that we did just want to note for you this evening is, between the first and second reading, it was brought to staff's attention, the term churches as a special review use. And this has since been changed to religious institutions, which staff feel and has been highlighted to be more inclusive and also goes along more with the regulations that are in the city code because there is a very specific definition for religious institution in the municipal code usages. And this has been reflected both on this table as well as in the actual draft amendment with a strike through and an underline of the new wording. And one other thing to note is that any uses that are not explicitly listed in this 11th amendment are considered to be prohibited. So any uses that are listed are allowed, and the ones that are listed as special review use are allowed through that process, but anything else wouldn't be permitted on the site without further amendments. And moving on to analysis, because this is a GDP amendment, it is subject to Chapter 17.72 of the Municipal Code. And staff finds that this agreement meets the purpose and applicability statements of this chapter because the GDP encourages coordinated community design by allowing commercial uses that are consistent with other commercial properties in the Centennial Valley region, especially along the McCaslin Boulevard corridor. And staff also finds that this proposal meets the comprehensive plan and the McCaslin Small Area Plan policies because it helps retain commercial development by allowing uses such as retail by right. And what this does too is it helps facilitate, it helps facilitate like, sorry, it increases opportunities for development types of uses, and it mitigates vacancy rates by allowing for more uses that are seen elsewhere in the commercial corridor. And based on this information, staff are recommending approval of Ordinance 1853, Series 2023, which would approve an 11th amendment to the Centennial Valley General Development Plan, Amended and Restated Development Agreement, with the included amendment to revise permitted uses on the property at 972 West Dillon Road. And that concludes staff presentation, and I'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any clarifying questions on the presentation? Counselor Most?
Thank you. Thank you, that was great. I'm just wondering about the reposed 11th amendment permitted use by right, and I just wonder if you would just talk a little bit about, I see that there's previously, we prohibited hospitals and clinics, and now we're saying we're allowing medical clinics. I'm just, my question is about, I guess, non-retail uses in what is really an important retail corridor in the community. And if you could just speak to that a little bit, particularly, I'm thinking about, you know, what the impacts are, for example, government and public facilities, or even professional business administrative offices in terms of tax revenue and how this, these uses would support the tax revenue in, within this commercial, quote, retail corridor.
Yeah, thank you for that. I know that was something that was brought up during the Planning Commission meeting as well, particularly with the professional business administrative offices use. And when staff was reviewing the uses permitted by right, some of the things that we took into consideration when working with the applicant had to do with the size of the parcel and what we as staff felt was a reasonable use for the parcel. And a lot of the uses that are listed on there were based on the underlying zoning for this area, which is the Planned Community Zone District. And we felt that by limiting it to just retail, something such as just retail spaces, it would limit the uses allowed for the parcel, which, one of the things that this parcel in particular and parts of Parcel H, which is that general area in the city, have struggled with is, like, there have been vacancy rates over there. So one of the goals that we wanted to have is to have a more broad allowance of uses that followed that underlying zoning. And it's something that is seen in other parts of the Centennial Valley General Development Plan, so that's where staff are coming with, with these uses.
Others? All right, we'll go to the first round of public comments. Is there anybody in the room, or does anybody in the room have any public comments? Seeing none, anybody on Zoom? All right. Council questions, discussion?
Another quick comment?
Counselor Most?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Director Sakaro because I had raised the issue about listing churches on there, and you guys corrected that, and I really appreciate it. I think it reflects the values of our community much better. Thank you so much.
Okay, this is where I get to jump in because no one else is putting their hand up. You know, I think that the first thing I would want to say, thank you for your work on this. I think it's very clear, it's a very good staff report. I think there was a very good discussion at Planning Commission, and I really appreciate the work that Planning Commission does because they do a lot of the heavy lifting that we don't have to do here. So they covered a lot of those things. You know, I wish that all of these spaces along the lines of Counselor Most was mentioning that we had sales tax, but, you know, right in front of that building, we have a sales tax generating building right in front, so this one's tucked back a little bit. One question I have Director Sakaro, you know, is this an example of where we should be considering updating our code? I mean, would this be, I know I'm a little off topic, but, because it seems like what we're doing is doing updates that make perfect sense, but we're having to go through a procedural step here. If we updated our code, would it be such that we wouldn't be going through this because it would be an administrative decision?
Yeah, yeah, this could seem like a little bit of a Band-Aid to maybe a bigger problem with our code. So I think, you know, we're starting our comprehensive plan, I think that's going to be discussed. We expect is a comprehensive rewrite of the Land Development Code. I think there's, could be a lot of potential pros to rewriting the Land Development Code and, you know, solving these types of issues could be included in that. The Centennial Valley General Development Plan is hugely complex, as you've seen by the number of amendments that have taken place over time. Some of them have use restrictions on different parcels. So I think from a predictability standpoint for the business community, it would be a pretty big benefit to try to clarify this. So, so yes, I think so.
Thank you for that. I have no other comment. We're going to have another round of public comment, and then we'll come back to council. Any council comments at this point? All right. Well, we'll go to the second round of public comments. Looks like no public comment in the, in the chambers and none on Zoom. All right, that was fast. All right, council discussion?
I'll just go briefly and agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, anything that's going to help us reduce some of our commercial vacancies is a good thing, and, you know, bracketing and setting aside the sales tax question for a little while, I hope this helps this property be used for something useful. So I'll be in favor.
Mayor Pro Tem Fahey?
I'll echo what Counselor Hefner just said, and you, Mayor, and say that it is time, and I'm happy that we are going to be taking up updating all of these different codes in the comprehensive plan so that, so that the whole process for building and development is a little bit quicker and smoother and easier. So I will also be in favor of this.
Thank you. Did you want to comment? Counselor Most?
No, I was just nodding along.
You were just waving to me?
Just waving, nodding, happy.
All right, well, it sounds like we're ready to close a public hearing, yes? All right, is there a motion on Ordinance 1852? Oh, Counselor, I apologize, please. Counselor Lay?
Oh, thanks. I was just going to say, I think everybody has made comments that I would have made, but I want to, I did want to point out, one of the things that I think I do appreciate is how good our planners are. And it's one of those things that we can, generally speaking, bet that once they get closing to us, they've run it through the ringer. And this is, this is exactly what we want, and I appreciate the care which they did their work on the staff report. So I'll be in favor of it also, and here's to having, we're fairly brief kinds of reviews because we, the work has really been done through the process. So thank you.
Did I hear a motion, Counselor Lay?
I don't have the number right in front of me, so why don't you?
I'll do.
All right, we'll have someone else do it, that's okay. Counselor Most?
I'd be happy to make a resolution. I propose that, oopsie, whoops, it jumped away from me, that Ordinance Number 1853, Series 2023, An Ordinance Approving the 11th Amendment to the Centennial Valley General Development Plans: Amended and Restated Development Agreement to Revise Permitted Uses for a Portion of Parcel H at 972 West Dillon Road be approved.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right, we have plenty of seconds, that's great. Any discussion? City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. We're going to move on to regular business, C, Budget Amendment. City Manager Durbin, did you want to make any introductory comments? Are we going to hand it off to the Finance Director?
Let's just go straight to Ryder Bailey, Finance Director.
Oh, was I? It's my first one. Thanks for your help. Do you? Oh, no, it's testing, let's see, how do you get the full screen? Here we go. Beautiful. Testing. All right, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Director.
My name is Ryder Bailey, I am the Finance Director for the City of Louisville. Today you'll be receiving a brief presentation on the First Amendment to our city's 2023 budget. Staff is seeking your approval of a First Amendment to the city's and the Revitalization Commission's 2023 budgets. This First Amendment to the adopted budget is largely administrative and primarily driven by the timing of large capital, there we go, large capital and utility projects. Finance staff batches budget amendments from previously heard council items. Today's amendment can be broken down into three categories: capital project carryforwards, timing of capital projects, adjustments to budgeted capital projects, and operational amendments and carryforwards. Resolutions attached to today's packet are the official amending documents and present the amendment at the fund level. The fund level is the legal level of budgetary authority at the city. The attached resolutions present budget at the fund level a higher summary of detail, while the appendices to the resolution present detail at the line item level, which is the greatest detail. Within the council communication is a summary of the impacts to revenue, expenditures, and changes to fund balances for each individual fund, assuming the amendments are approved. At a high level and summarized by fund group, today's amendment impacts both the revenue source side as well as the expenditure side of the budget. The net impact is an increase of about $11 million, approximately 11% of the total city and Revitalization Commission's budgets. You're probably familiar with most of these funds. I'll say that the second row, Special Revenue Funds, is the aggregate of parks and open space, cemetery, historical space, cemetery, historical preservation, and the recreation fund. As mentioned on a previous slide, the detail by fund, please refer to the summary of impacts that has a lot of granular detail. Upon adoption of today's amendment, all funds, staff has calculated the impacts to the budget and confirmed that all funds will be within the reserve requirements and will remain in full compliance with the city's financial policies. The Finance Committee reviewed and approved a preliminary draft of the proposed amendment at their April 20 meeting. Again, staff's recommendation is for the city to approve the proposed First Amendment to the city's revitalization, the city's and the Revitalization Committee's adopted budget. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the Director on the presentation? All right, we'll go to public comments. Seeing no public comments. Go back to council questions, comments?
I'll just make a brief comment that Counselor Dickinson is neither here in person nor here online, but he was with us in his role as Chair of the Finance Committee. Unfortunately, tonight, he came down with, and this is a direct quote, "A bit of the malaria," and is sleeping it off, but we can all rest assured that he has seen these numbers.
All right, any other comments?
I would also like to thank Counselor Dickinson, but also Hefner and Hamilton, the other members of the Finance Committee. I think they've done a lovely job, and thank you, staff, Ryder. And I think I would like to propose that we accept the budget amendment.
Okay, there's two resolutions. We'll have to do them separately, but we can do them one at a time.
We do.
Let me close a public hearing?
Oh, that would be good.
And please, make your motions.
I would move that we approve Resolution Number 29, series 2023, a resolution amending the 2023 budget by amending appropriations in the general fund, Open Space and Parks Fund, Conservation Trust Lottery Fund, Historic Preservation Fund, Recreation Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Recreation Construction Fund, Water Utility Fund, Wastewater Utility Fund, Stormwater Utility Fund, Golf Course Fund, and Fleet Management Fund for carryforward of appropriations and additional appropriations within such funds and adjusting budgeted revenue in the general fund, Open Space and Parks Fund, Historic Preservation Fund, Recreation Fund, American Rescue Plan Act Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Water Utility Fund, Wastewater Utility Fund, Stormwater Utility Fund, Golf Course Fund, and Fleet Management Fund.
Do I have a second?
I will second that stupendous reading by our Mayor Protem.
I've actually never heard this particular resolution read with such levity. So that's, that was awesome. Any discussion on the resolution? We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. You want to make another motion, Mayor Protem? We'd love the way you're reading them.
Okay. I will also propose that we accept Resolution Number 30, series 2023, a resolution amending the 2023 budget by amending appropriations in the Louisville Revitalization Commission.
Second.
All right, any discussion? May roll call, please.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. You want to make another motion, Mayor Protem? We'd love the way you're reading them.
Okay. I will also propose that we accept Resolution Number 30, series 2023, a resolution amending the 2023 budget by amending appropriations in the Louisville Revitalization Commission.
Second.
All right, any discussion? May roll call, please.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
All right, passed unanimously. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, counsel. And maybe before we go, I could pass out a couple gifts to y'all. Fresh off the press is the 2023-24 budget documents, so I'll walk around and pass it out to all of y'all.
Is there a video?
We're working on a video for next year, but we'll stick with the print for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Next regular business is Item D, Resolution Number 31, series 2023, a resolution approving an amendment to the cooperation agreement between the City of Louisville and the Louisville Revitalization Commission for pre-approved spending authority. So I guess we're going to have a presentation by staff.
Yes, thank you. I'm April Kornar. I'm the Economic Vitality Manager for the City of Louisville. I don't actually have a slide presentation on this one. We'll keep it pretty brief. I'm here to present this evening potential amendments to the existing cooperation agreement between the LRC and the city. The purpose of these amendments are to allow greater spending discretion on certain pre-approved items that are funded by the LRC. The proposed amended agreement adds a new subsection, and that establishes a formal process to enable the LRC to obtain city council approval of LRC programs, which would include pre-approved spending authority. This would be very similar to how the current facade improvement program is already established. So with the draft amendment, each LRC program budget would be submitted annually to the city for review and approval. Once that's approved, that would then allow the LRC, without additional council approvals, to move forward, work with city staff, boards, commissions, councils, and approve LRC program applications, and also enter into contracts with program awardees. And then they can provide those program funds subject to their LRC program budget. Again, really, the gist of it is so that each individual application doesn't have to go through LRC review, then come for council review, and go back. So it really saves a bunch of time for the applicants there to keep their projects moving forward. And there will be, relative to fiscal impact, the new LRC programs again would require council approval as well as an amendment to the LRC budget when they do establish new programs that are proposed, but there would not be any other impact to the city's general fund budget.
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So I think conceptually, this makes a lot of sense, and I guess I would liken it, I mean, with the Director of Finance here, I liken this to us approving an appropriation and then programmatic spending within that. Is that a similar perspective from a finance perspective?
I would agree with that assessment.
All right, so what we're doing is, like, we're approving departments programmatically. We're approving the LRC programmatically based upon programs they bring to us and we approve. Right? So this is actually just streamlining process, and it's a technicality of the way the urban renewal was set up, where we had to approve the program and the expenditure, whereas we're just approving the program with the appropriation for spending.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Most?
Just to be really clear, because, you know, when I first looked at this, and I'm not terribly familiar with the LRC, and I think there's a lot of people in our community who aren't necessarily that familiar with the LRC, right? The LRC is funded through our, an urban renewal vehicle, right? So it comes out of sales tax in the urban renewal area, and that, this is something that I've learned through questioning. And just to confirm what the mayor was saying is that the budget that is presented includes a breakdown of programs. Is that correct?
The budget that was presented earlier this evening?
No, the LRC budget, like, the LRC budget, right? It's, when we approve that budget?
When you see it, yes.
It's broken down by the programs. Is that correct, that they want to operate?
Yes.
So, again, as the mayor said, we're already seeing all of that upfront, and all we're doing right now is just saying, let them go do their business without having to come back to the city council every single time and get approval.
Right, and you're also giving them the authority of the appropriation amount for spending within that program.
If I could just add a couple clarifications. So they're funded largely by the property tax increment, and so this conceptually is that they can, I mean, when you see their budget, there's operating budget, but sometimes there is a new program that they want to propose, like the facade program. So this allows them, through the budgeting process or a budget amendment process, to get a program approved, a new program, which is different. I always get these, because we have all kinds of programmatic things at the city, but this is, we're using the term differently here. This is like a program. So what we're anticipating is the LRC is going to be looking at new programs that are similar to the facade program. They would present those programs to city council, so they have to present to city council the content of the program, the applications, like, you'll get to see all the inner workings plus agree to the appropriation, but then they're free to move independently to implement the program.
Great, thank you. I just, like, for me, I have not been terribly familiar with the LRC, and I think there's probably a lot of people in the community that aren't, so I think, you know, having these kind of explanations makes it clear to everybody what's happening. Thanks.
Okay, Counselor Hefner, and then we'll go to the City Attorney.
Yeah, so I think it would just help me to get a couple concrete examples of a program and then an expenditure within a program. Sort of, what are the, what kinds of things are we talking about?
In terms of new programs or just how this currently works?
Use an existing program and imagine we had changed it to this new structure.
Well, this recently was done with the facade program, so the facade improvement program. So what they did is they came forward, and this is the process that they established. They said, we would like to use this amount of money and do a budget amendment so we can allocate that towards facade improvement program, and then identified what that program looks like, how does it work, what's the review process, what are the maximum amounts that can be awarded to applicants, and then got that approved by city council. That allows the LRC then to work with city staff and applicants to review those facade applications and be able to approve those and award those through an LRC approval process, as opposed to going to LRC and then waiting to get onto a council agenda for an additional meeting.
Thanks, that's helpful.
You're welcome.
City Attorney Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out that one of the requirements for the LRC proposing any program under this amendment language would be that the form contract to be executed would be approved by the city council. So that is still in place. The city council still, you know, the current requirement is the LRC cannot enter into any contract until it's approved by the city council. You know, as a practical matter, that means the LRC reviews it, says, yes, this is what we like, sends it to city council for approval, then it comes back to LRC for approval. So it does take quite a bit of time. Under this kind of procedure, if the city council approves the program and the form contract, then we don't have to have that contract travel back and forth for each program participant.
Thank you for that clarification. Let's take public comment at this point in time.
Hi, I'm Graham Smith. I'm the Vice Chair with the LRC. So I just want to say, hey, thanks for listening, and if you guys have any questions on the program or kind of what we've done historically, I'm here now, so, yeah, open for it. I mean, a great example for you specifically, right? Early on in the facade improvement program, we had an application for new windows, right? Low E, like, all that good stuff for new environmental reasons, right? The old windows were leaky. It was $13,000, no big deal. Under the facade improvement program, right, it was a very simple application. Staff reviewed it, said, yes, this meets the requirements of the program. We were able to sign off on that and then just go, right? And the business owner can just kind of move forward with that. Without that process in place, right, that $13,000 grant comes to you guys for approval, it comes back to us for reapproval, there's a much longer timeline to success, right? So Deb is often at our meetings, obviously Chris is on them as well, so in no way is this an attempt to kind of skirt any kind of oversight on your parts. It's purely a matter of trying to speed things up and make things a little bit easier on the folks that are looking for this assistance. So that's at just high level, and if there's any questions, go ahead.
Thank you for your work on the LRC, and thank you for your comments.
It's mostly staff. I mean, let's be honest.
Well, we know staff is awesome. Yeah, and I'll, coming back to council, I'm just, thank you very much. I didn't notice that. Oh, it looks like the Chair of the LRC, Lexi Adler.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Lexi Adler, 415 Sunland Street in Louisville. Sorry I couldn't be there. I was on baby duty tonight and putting my baby to bed. I, just in time, I was able to join, but I just wanted to thank you all for hearing this amendment and taking the time to discuss it, and I appreciate Graham being there as well. And again, I wanted to thank staff for bringing this to you all, and we just, we really appreciate all your support, and we've seen a lot of momentum in our programs this year, and it's just been really exciting to work with the business community. So that's all I wanted to say. I'm grateful for you all, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Counselor Most?
I'm making motions tonight. Okay, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 31, series 2023, a resolution approving an amendment to the cooperation agreement between the City of Louisville and the Louisville Revitalization Commission for pre-approved spending authority.
Second.
Any more discussion?
I just.
Yes, Counselor Hefner?
I think this is the first time we've heard from April at a meeting, and I just want to recognize her and thank her for the great presentation.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Passed unanimously. We will move on to the City Attorney's Report, and we only have, like, two hours left, so if you could make it brief.
I'll be very brief. I have no report this evening.
Thank you very much. So we're on to Item 9, Council Comments, Committee Reports on Identification of Future Agenda Items. Thank you. Counselor Lay?
What I wanted to mind, folks, is Friday, 1:30, the EDC, Economic Vitality Committee, is going to be talking about the current version of the proposed Dark Skies ordinance in Louisville, and hope that members of the business community and other stakeholders should be able to join us for that, for a good, kind of deeper dive into some of the issues there and some of the thoughts, concerns, and suggestions that we might take there. So.
All right, thank you. Others? I have two items. The first is the Open Space Parks Tax Task Force, which I cannot say any faster than that without stumbling. So last night was the last meeting of the task force. I want to thank the members of the task force that represented open space, parks, and sustainability. I also want to thank the staff because staff had to quickly gather a lot of history from the last 30 years and put some financial reports together, and our Parks Director is gone, but I want to thank him for his efforts as well, and of course, the City Clerk, who had to show up on Mondays. But I think the process was important, bringing together the various interests of the city, parks and open space, reviewing history, reviewing all the financials. Last night, we actually came down to an agreement, and we have presented that. Staff has taken that, and we'll be working with the attorney and others on ballot language that we will be able to review at the June 20 meeting. That will be a discussion/direction meeting at that point in time. But I think we had a unanimous, I think, I mean, for some members who are there, I think everybody in the room basically agreed. What we're talking about doing is taking our 0.375% tax and going to a 0.5% tax with the additional increment going towards open space maintenance and acquisition, and keeping it at a 10-year cycle. So I think that's a basic tenet of what we did. If you look at the, I'm sure you all read the 300-page polling report that you were sent. This particular item, if you take a look, it got 64% in polling, the sort of the watermark for if you take a look, it got 64% in polling. The, sort of the watermark for, you know, where you look at polling is 60% or more. So I think that the fact that this is a very positive thing, and the city is very supportive of parks and open space, I'm very optimistic and very energized that this is going to be an important additional funds to build, support the challenging needs we have for open space and parks. And so we will have a discussion about June 20. And then on June 11, we have first reading. July 11, we have first reading. And then July 25 will be our second reading. We will have to agree upon the final ballot language that'll go on the ballot in November. Any questions on any of that? But there was a lot of heavy lifting by the task force. We had some amazing discussions, and I think it was really a great process. And it's important. I know some of the comments from the public tonight were about how we work together, and I think this is an example of the way we should work together. So the second item, we're done with the legislative session, but there are other policy-type of things we're going to need to be addressing. So the city manager is retaining the services of Megan Davis, who will be helping us look at Proposition 123 and how it is applicable to the City of Lewisville. There are some aspects of that today that really exclude us being able to get some of the grant and funding and the support we would need for affordable housing. So she is looking at Prop 123, and we'll have a briefing on that. And then we will, we'll want to talk, starting with DOLA and some of the other state agencies. But we also need to solicit the support of Representative Brown, you know, from the legislative side as well. So that's coming, and that's an important thing. If we're going to be moving ahead seriously with affordable housing, we need to address that as being one of the tools that we need in our tool belt in order to be able to accomplish something. So I just want to give you a heads up. Both of those things will be coming forth in our future agendas. Any question on that one? No? Any other items? Are we ready? Meeting's adjourned.